Welcome, and I'd like to call this work session to order on February 25th, 2025 at 3:01 PM. Councilman Vasquez, if you'll leave us some prayer.
Please join me in a moment of prayer. Heavenly Father, grant us a shared vision for the people of our city. We especially ask for your wisdom and guidance to make the right decisions for all employees of the city and all of our citizens. Help us to align our goals and our purpose as a city council. May our unity reflect your will and bring honor to your name. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. We're going to go out of order. We're going to take up four before three, so I'll need a motion to suspend the rules. Some move by Councilman Vasquez or second, Councilman Mitchell. Although the favor say aye. All right, let's go to number four, presentation from Hydromax USA on the current progress of our valve assessment maintenance program. Alex, there you are.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. How are y'all?
Good, thank you, sir.
Good. So last year in August, City Council approved a contract with Hydromax for a valve assessment. So this will be a presentation showing an update on where we're at with that project. And I've got Hydromax here. So if you guys want to come up and then I will give the floor over to them.
Sure. Would please introduce yourself, gentlemen, as we know who you are.
Yes, sir. My name is Miles Summers. I'm a business development manager with Hydromax USA.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Austin Jordan. I'm a project manager with Hydromax USA.
And I'm Russ Jackson, Director, Operations West for Hydromax USA.
Welcome, gentlemen. Glad to have you here today. It's your floor.
Where is Hydromax located?
We are, corporate office is in Flower Mound, Texas.
I think he's asking where your Odessa office is located.
It's in the parking lot. There's several of our offices driving around town as well. But Austin here is going to lead, he's been close to your data and everything. He's going to go ahead and lead.
Yes, sir.
Yep, so thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So, yeah, all right. So, yeah, so as, as we mentioned, we wanted to talk through kind of where we are as of right now with our valve assessment program. I have a live view of our dashboard, our project management dashboard that we provide to the city to show high level and some in-depth level of where we are in terms of the progress we've been able to make and the information we've been able to derive as we've been able to proceed through our asset investigations or inspections. Roughly, we are roughly 63% through the assets that have been given to us in terms of all of the, all of your mapping data and GIS data regarding your assets. We were roughly 63% of that underneath of that kind of gauge that doesn't look so pretty up there. But you can see as we've gone through so far, we're roughly 66% operable in terms of the conditions that we have found or left your assets in, which is a pretty, pretty good number, at least in terms of in a first pass through any of our projects. It varies in terms of different clients, but typically it's, that's a pretty solid first, first pass. We have been able to identify a handful of those assets that fit either a non-operable condition or non-locatable condition. In terms of the inoperable conditions, those are comprised of generally three to four categories. It's either the asset or the valve in this instance is frozen. We're not able to turn it based on the torque that we are applying. It could spin free, which would be an instance where we try to operate the valve. And as we go to open or close it, it's not stopping or indicating that it is actually capable of being opened or closed. And then there are a subset which there's no actual operating nut on top of that asset in order for us to be able to try to actuate it on or off or open or closed. Generally speaking, as Miles is going through that map, you could see anything that is identified in blue or assets that we have inspected and we're able to collect data on. And this is one of the things that I think I like to tote is, you know, what sets us apart from a lot of our competitors is our, our ability to present technology and present data back to a client is something that's really unparalleled in our market. But as Miles is clicking through one of the assets, you can see as you click into it, you can dive down and see all the attribution we've been able to collect as we've been assessing that asset, or at least this one in particular. And you can see, you know, we're, we're capturing what type of structure it is, what were we able to do in terms of the number of turns? What does that mean in terms of the size, the size of that asset versus what we're able to find or your plans? And then in instances where that valve is inoperable or that asset is in an inoperable condition, well, we'll provide that same level of attribution for those assets as well. As I said, we're, I think we're roughly at 350, 320 inoperable assets. And there's breakdown of those categories as well. Our 327, thank you. And you could see on there, you know, the, the percentage that we have found if we're frozen, which means we weren't able to, to actuate those assets is the largest portion, which again is, is not incredibly uncommon. One of the things that we really love to show with our dashboard is as you click through each of the filter or each of the information panels on the side, it will actually update that map to show you exactly which assets fall into those categories. And there's a handful of different pieces of information on there. If you go to the layers and turn off the, turn off the, yeah, inspected and the uninspected. There you go. So you can see that those are exactly your 83 assets that have a spin-free condition. And if you want to select any of the other ones, those are the 33 valves that we have found that we're missing the operator nut. If you go through the other panels, so again, kind of continuing to drive down the path of granularity and being able to really get a, a sense of your system, being able to see specifically what sizes fall into those interoperable conditions, where they're located in terms of pressure planes or different sectors you have within, within your system. This, this dashboard gives you the ability to do that. And we also provide as part of our deliberables monthly, this data and, and different formats for you to be able to consume. But in terms of being able to strategically plan any capital investments for rehabilitation in the future, this, this dashboard gives you exactly that capability of saying, okay, well, if I know that I have a, a budget of X number of dollars, where are my more critical sections, where are my more critical assets? What is the state of those? And quite frankly, that's, that's the goal of this program, right? Is to be able to understand a full state of the entire condition of your, of your system. And if you need to shut something down in case of an emergency, if you need to, being able to, again, go back to the capital funding or capital investment planning, you're able to target which areas give you the, the best bang for the buck.
And you do have live access to this?
Yep.
Your water department has live access to this every day?
Yeah, and we partner really well with, with the water department here in terms of communications. If, if we are coming across an asset that is closed, we coordinate with your, with your water department, understand, you know, is there a reason for that being closed? Or, you know, what would be the impact of us turning that asset on? And, you know, if, if that determination is made, we'll, we'll turn it on or, you know, we'll, we coordinate with them very closely in order to make sure that, you know, we're, we're giving you the best state of your system as we leave it. Yeah, I mean, so kind of clicking through some more of these in terms, this also falls into the inoperable or cannot locate assets. You know, we provide a breakdown of how many of those are due to being buried within a paved area, how many of them have, you know, a stuck lid or something that prevented us from being able to do it. But again, it gives you, your team, the ability or your water department's team, the ability to really isolate and focus their attention on what makes the most sense. I think, yeah, I mean, we go, we, we break down in each, each of the panels that we have up there. Actually, can you go to the one with the side, the pipe sizing? Excellent, yeah. So that's, that's one that I like to, to show a lot of our clients too, is that, you know, when you want to get a sense of, you know, what does our system look like? This is the breakdown per pipe size of any of the assets that we've, we've been able to touch, at least as we've made it through the progress, project so far. Typically, you'll see a very similar chart like that regardless of what clients you're working with, but at least it gives you a sense of, hey, I've, I, I know that I have the majority of my assets are within a certain size range. If I need to focus capital dollars, I can, I can apply that towards that size range and have a better sense of what that impact area is. But I think holistically, as, as we've been able to make our way through the project, that the, the key point for everybody is, you know, getting that state, understanding that state of your system gives you the ability to say, if I have to, if I have to isolate a section either for a replacement or for an emergency, I know the exact assets that I can go to to do that. I know the exact condition that they're going to be in, and I don't have to spend, you know, a ridiculous amount of hours trying to pivot and shift and adjust my resources to try and, you know, minimize the impact to our residents in order to isolate that section, in order to shut off that, that line break. I think that's, I mean, that's. Sure, absolutely.
So some of the very important parts of the program are just giving you the knowledge of what do I have? What is my system? What is this condition? What is its life? So in this, we found roughly, what, 399 closed valves? Something like 300 something closed valves? The impact of a closed valve can be water quality, can be lower water pressures, all that kind of thing. So it's very, very common for us, especially on a first pass through on a program, to find multiple closed valves. These happen through various many ways. Contractor doing a job, just didn't get everything back open. Emergencies are the number one way I've seen all over the country. You go out there at 3:00 AM on Saturday for a line break and everybody's closing whatever they can to get it off, well, valves get missed. It happens. It happens here. It happens every single city I've ever been in. So it's not through negligence. It's, we're tired and we want to go home and the water's on. But you leave one closed and that starts to affect your flow and your water quality. And this is where you're going to get water quality complaints, people talking about dirty water, smelly water, just overall flow, your chlorine residuals will suffer, which I know all of that is up now since we've started this program. And that's a very significant thing. And so the, like I said, the big key of the thing is for you to have information. All of our clients basically pay us for information. If I just operate the valve and I don't tell you anything, there's no value in that. Sure, I operated it. What did it do? So the key to what we're giving you is the information and as a tool to use for yourselves going forward and to understand your system and know where your areas of need, where your pain points are. And it also helps you when you are going to go, you're planning a project, you can look at this now and say, I know these valves are closed. I'm going to plan around that. I'm going to plan that if I replace this valve, it may be a higher cost using a line stop or some other kind of device. That helps me now replace multiple other valves without that excess cost. So that's part of the big value that you get out of this.
Can I back you guys up a little bit? Just act like I don't know anything. When was this project started? I mean, because you're talking and I get you, but some of us are new to the die, so.
Sure. It was right after August, so it was approved August 13th.
August 13th. What is your estimated completion time?
I think we're, since we're roughly 60% through, probably another June or July.
And Alex, you may help me on this one a little bit. I don't mean to, I mean, all of y'all can help me understand better. So y'all are determined for us what the problem is, and we're going to have to go back and fix it, Alex? Is that fair?
So pretty much, and that's what, that's what I was going to start after we got done with this, is what's the next steps?
Okay, that, I'm sorry, I didn't jump ahead. I'm just trying to understand the scope of your work. Your work really is to identify and determine the issues, provide this to us. And you may have already said it, but can you tell me what the, on the left-hand side, there's a, you know, with the diagram, you have the CNA, for example. I don't, I don't have a chart of what that means.
Okay, CNA would be cannot access. So for whatever reason, we couldn't get to it. And CNA would be cannot locate. So your map says there's a valve there. We go out with metal detectors and probes and we look. We spend 20 minutes, 15 to 20 minutes per valve, per contract to look for the valve. If at that point we can't find it, then it gets turned in as it cannot locate. Older systems cannot look, that haven't been assessed in a long time, it's not uncommon that some of these valves may not be there. They could have been removed, replaced, moved 40 feet down the road when they were replaced. So this is where Alex and his team will go in and, and probably actually look for these or may find through other information that they have that, well, you know what? That valve was removed in 1962, you know? So, and I use those examples because I've seen those examples. So I've been doing this a long time. A lot of this gray hair comes from, well, most of it's from him, but it comes, I've been all over the country and I've seen all kinds of systems. There's nothing really unique about the issues within your system. It's very, very common for what we see, especially on something that hasn't been assessed in a long time. But so all of these different conditions, again, they give you the, the knowledge of where, where do we got to go first and what do we need to do? On a frozen valve, for example, so we set a torque limit with you guys from the get-go, where we're going to go to. Our machine ramps up 50 foot pounds at a time, starts at 50 and goes up. We stop at 250. We don't need to own a bunch of valves. We're not in the valve business. We're in the valve assessment business. So at that point, we will call and say, hey, we're at X valve. Do you want us to go up more in torque and try to recover that valve? If we're in front of a school on a Tuesday in the school year, answer is more than likely going to be no. Leave it alone. If we're in front of a dialysis center or a hospital, it's going to be no. But we're going to make that call anyway, and it's your guys' decision. We can also go and take that list of frozen and come back later, and you could determine some area of priority and say, hey, we'd like you to go back there with the machine and try to massage these, spend some time on it. And that's generally done on an hourly basis versus a per valve basis. I have done this on valves where I have been there all day long. And I had a 16-inch valve that ran all the way up to 1,450 foot pounds and we got it going and started creaking and moaning. And we ran this thing all day long and got it down to where it was under 100 foot pounds operating, meaning one man on a valve versus you're not turning it at all. You know, our highest torque our machine will go to is 1,500. So our typical machine, we've got an arm. If you ever see the guys out here, that's what they use the most, that's 750 foot pounds. But we have a slide out. It's called TM7. I don't know why they call it that, but it goes to 1,500 foot pounds. So the arm is ERV 750. That makes a little more sense, extended reach valve operator, 750 foot pounds. See? A little coding for you there. But again, the reason people do these projects and hire us is we can, we consider ourselves to be experts in the world of valves and fire hydrants. I've been doing this for 20-plus years, and I've gone out and touched, I've done everything I asked my guys to do. The information, the value, and, and we get a lot of questions on, well, why don't we just do this ourselves? Well, you have staffing issues typically, there's, you just don't have enough people. And what I see in every single utility across the country, they have guys that operate the valves, but then when they have a line break, that guy's got to go do that. When they have to go turn off for non-payment, that guy's got to go do that. So what I like to tell everybody is we have, well, for us, the benefit of focus, not that your people aren't focused, but you're focused on six or seven things. We're focused on one. So that's how we're able to get through this as fast as we can. Our crews will typically do 35 to 50 valves a day. And because that's all they do and they're very well-trained. So the idea is to get through, get you your data and your information and help you advance your system.
I know, I'm not an engineer.
I don't understand a word he said. Explain to me, you go back, what, what, really, I don't, I'm not trying to make fun of you, but what's a closed valve left open? I mean, is a valve supposed to be closed and it's open?
In, in some cases, they are supposed to be closed. You'll have what's called a system divide or a pressure zone divide, where you might have a higher pressure here, a lower pressure there. Alex, you could probably speak to that. In some cases, the valve is not supposed to be closed. So what you'll see in our report will be found closed, left open. And that is when we have called and they said, no, no, that valve should be open. Go ahead and open it up. But there are cases, in many cases, where the valve is supposed to be closed. We'll still operate the valve, make sure it works, but it's a system divide. It's supposed to be closed because you don't want the mixing of those two pressure zones or poor systems.
And we have very few of those. It's just right there where the pressure zone changes from the upper pressure plane to the lower pressure plane. One's on 56th. There's a couple that runs along that line and then over on the east side by Parks Bell. So very few. If it's closed, there's, it very should be closed, so.
The, the other cases of where they would be is if maybe you cut and capped the line and you're abandoning a main down there, that's going to be closed and it's closed because otherwise you're going to flood, you know, a bunch of people because it's just, and it's abandoned on that other end.
Yeah, or it's a future stub out and you're, you're isolating that section because you're anticipating future growth.
Okay.
So when you guys finished the other 33%, what's left for us to do?
Quite a bit.
That's, yeah.
Quite a bit. If y'all want to, y'all can take off and then we can kind of.
Before you guys leave, you might have another question?
Just a busy, a quickie. You had mentioned the state of the system and I, Hydromax is all over the country. You've seen a lot of cities, so I appreciate the visuals because that helps to absorb the information and data tracking this is great.
Sure.
My question is, let's ask it from a different direction. Comparatively to other cities, how are we doing?
You're, you're not bad. You're, you're, you're right in there with the average, pretty much. We see this, especially, and you have to gauge that by cities that haven't done a valve program or haven't done one for a very long time. You're, these are the same results we see a lot of places. When you get into the regular, like AWWA recommends that your small diameter, non-critical valves get operated every five years, your large diameter valves every other year, and your, all your critical valves every year. So if you get into a program where you're repetitively doing it, your system health will get better and your issue of the life of your valves will be extended. I've operated valves from the twenties, from the teens. The oldest I've worked on were two valves in Cleveland, Ohio from 1887. They're two main feeds off of Lake Erie, two 72-inch valves. And I told the guy, I think you're out of warranty. You might want to think about replacing these. You got your life out of them. But they are the two main feeds and there's one on each side of the street and they operate one a week to make sure that they work because they'll be, Cleveland, Ohio would be on water. So that's one of the big paybacks you get out of this is you're going to extend the life of an asset. If you have a car sitting in your driveway and you don't run it for 10 years, it ain't going to run. You're going to have to do a bunch of work. Well, if you were to go out there and start that thing every now and then, it would work, right? So same thing with your valve. It's a, it's a mechanical device and it's going, if you don't operate it, it's not going to want to.
And just, just in case there's something there, you had mentioned the term pain points and identifying pain points. If you could do a summarization for Odessa, Texas, what would you say our pain points are?
You're closer to the project than I am.
Yeah, I was going to say, the majority of your pain points are around either valves that are closed or valves that have been paved over.
And, and paved over is not terribly uncommon. Most paving projects, they go and they pave over everything.
Exactly.
And then they come back and you see them making a mess with a jackhammer and then they raise it up. Well, if, if that didn't happen, they're paved over. So, and it's important that we identify those for you. So our guys will with the metal detector try to find them. We'll make a circle on the street, but you won't see the valve because it's underneath the asphalt. So, and that is where Alex's team would come out and, and raise them.
Yeah, in fact, in, in the dashboard where we, it shows the breakdown of the inoperable conditions or, or I'm sorry, the CNA conditions. One of the things that isn't necessarily apparent in that is just because that valve wasn't able to be located, doesn't necessarily mean that that valve is not operable, right? And so in the instance of it being paved over, if you were to be able to break out the pavement that's covering it, there's a good chance, I mean, as of right now, or at least a 66% chance of that valve being operable and being able to be used.
We list them as inoperable because you can't operate it. You can't get to it. You cannot operate it. So it's not that it's broken, but we can't get to it.
Gentlemen, anything?
I apologize for not understanding how to drink water in the beginning. You may have covered this, but at the end of this, do we own the data?
Yes, you own the data. We don't maintain the dashboard beyond the end of the project. As long as we're under contract with you, the dashboard will be live. If we're not, I mean, because it's taking up resources on our end, but all the data, and you get data every month with your invoice. You get the data set from that month, a full shape file that you can integrate. And we give it to you in a format that you can integrate into your system.
That's what I was going to add. Even if y'all leave, you can't have this, we have it in our system, right, Alex?
Yeah, it's, this is an ASW product. If you guys are ASW, it's, you're going to, you'll have access to, to build, we were, we've talked about this before, to be able to build a very similar system for yourselves and tailor it specifically to yourself, should be able to do that. But you know, we shouldn't leave, really.
Good vendor. Gentlemen, anything else? If not, thank you guys very much for coming. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So what's the next steps? So pretty much what we're going to do, once we get all of this information, is I've sat down with Edgar and talked to him about getting an interactive map together to where we can go in and live data this for any field crews implemented into the MGO system that planning is handling right now to where you can go in and see exactly how many turns that this valve should take to close, to open, what instances that we have when we come to capital improvement projects. So we do have an account that's got a little bit over $9 million for valve projects that the last council had allocated at the end of the last fiscal year. That we will do projects in-house to replace valves. We will have to do that strategically to make sure that we get the best bang for our buck. But with this and with our interactive map, we're going to be able to go in and color-code them. So if it's broken, we'll make it purple, for say, and then the green ones will be, you know, operable. And then anything that we can do on top of that, we will be able to even go in and fix valves. Currently, right now, we're projected, we, there was a million dollar budget for this. We're projected somewhere around the $800,000 mark. So Hydromax does have it in their contract where they can come in and help fix some of the hubs, like you said. Maybe it's a thousand dollar fix and we can get the valve working instead of replacing and digging up the road and replacing a valve for somewhere around 10,000. And that would be, 10,000 would be probably what it would cost to do an eight-inch valve. To replace a 24-inch valve, you're talking 30 plus just for the valve. So there are instances where we will be able to go in and have Hydromax possibly fix things with the, the rest of the budget if we would like to. They've been great so far and this interactive map has been very helpful. And it's going to help us leaps and bounds with line breaks, with getting our system back to where it needs to be with the valves. We still have quite a bit to go, especially into the old parts of town. As you could, as you could see, the, you know, the older parts of town was still red, so we still have quite a bit of valves to check and that's where we're going to have a lot of issues. I will say the good thing about this is our chlorine residuals across the town are up very high compared to what that is. So currently, we're running the plant at a four chlorine residual, just, just call it a four. We are looking at turning that down to a three, which is going to help us budget-wise extremely. Somewhere between $200,000 to $300,000 a year on chlorine from the water treatment plant. We also have been able to find a valve that was on 52nd, right north of Dawn that was closed, which actually helped level the towers out a little bit more. They were somewhere around that seven-foot off mark. They've actually come a little bit down to where the tower's on the lower portion of the plane at Dawn and JBS. I've actually leveled out a little bit closer to what they should be. Hopefully, as we find more closed valves, we will be able to get that to where they're actually level. They should be level. Our JBS should be just a tad higher, but not where it's at right now. So those are the two good, really big points that we found with the chlorine residual and the closed valves being open and pressure being up in certain areas too.
So Alex, let me ask this question. Besides saving us money by reducing the chlorine levels from 4% down to 3%, what's that do for the quality of the water?
Oh, it's, it's better across it. So anytime you have water, you, you have a valve that's closed, you just have water sitting there. So it's going to build up turbidity. It's going to make, and then once we do open it, you will have that rush of turbidity that's going to push through and people will see that. We have had some calls where we have had some dirty water for a day in an area due to just turbidity, opening valves in the areas, closing them, working those valves. And so we will see that, but water quality is going to go up tremendously. Pressures are going to be up hopefully, especially on the east side of town, even if it's 5 PSI, that's huge. But we have seen all of that. And I do have some graphs that we just got turned in from the water treatment plant on the chlorine residuals and other tower levels. So it's going to be more than just money and that's going to be quarter water quality for sure.
Did you say there is money set aside for doing valve repair work?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
How much?
Nine million plus.
Million, okay.
So I I do believe that it was nine and a half million dollars, um, that was in a, that's in an account. Um, I, we have used a little bit of it to purchase the valves that we did at the Dawn Tower. Um, so the Dawn Tower can, is currently isolatable, we can isolate that tower, we've, uh, added all new valves and new piping for that, so.
Was that done on the last budget, I I'm sorry, I just, I know I've slept since then, but I don't remember that much money.
Yes, the last council, I think it was twenty-five million for two water line projects and then, uh, nine and a half. Uh, and nine and a half of that was valves and then seven was one project and seven and a half was another project.
Yeah, that's why I got confused, okay.
So County Road West, there's seven million budgeted for that and then, um, we have nine and a half for the other one.
Yeah, that's probably why I forgot that.
Yes, sir.
Alex, how does the, um, valve assessment, um, relate to or affect the va, the water meter replacement as far as what some of our citizens are saying that now their water bill is higher than it used to be? I don't know if I'm asking the right.
I I don't think there's a correlation between that, uh, there's, there should not be any correlation, um, you might have increased pressure, um, at the tap for them, but it it should not affect the water meters at all, uh, the water meters, uh, are separate from from the valves.
Now, were we eventually replacing valves?
Yes, sir.
Because of the investment.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, so in any of, any broken valves, we will try and go in and fix that we can, if it's a hub or a stem or anything that we can go and rework. Uh, now if it's frozen, where we can't, um, massage it to get it to where it needs to be, uh, we will have to go in and change those, yes, sir.
Are we sticking to one manufacturer on these valves or are we changing?
So we have.
So we can get parts?
Yeah, so currently I'm not having any problems with valves, um, getting them, um, but if it is a large amount, you know, say we've got two thousand valves, uh, probably not, but we do have a list of valve manufacturers that we can use that's within the engineering and utilities department, so. We do have multiple, it's not just, I don't believe it's just one, but we do have multiple that we can get.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So as you, this program evolves, are you going to have a dedicated person or does it take a team? How many people does it take to keep this program, you got, somebody's got to keep it up to date, right?
Yes, sir, so currently I am, uh, with all the positions that we've been able to open over the past, um, couple months. Um, I have looked into changing a position for myself that's called, uh, we currently have it as project coordinator um, in the utilities admin department, but we're looking at changing the job description for it. But they will be pretty much going in and this will be their main goal is to do and set up field, there will be the field work projects, plus we have an engineer within, uh, U T admin that they're going to work together to be able to figure out how we go in and fix and efficiently change these valves, um, for projects. Yes, sir, so I will have a dedicated person for this, yes, sir.
Keep this, I mean, since this is done, keep it up to date so it's used.
Yes, I I would like to do it in-house, I do not want to farm this out to where we, we spend a million or two million of the, the nine and a half where I I would rather just spend that solely on construction for contractors to come in and replace it and then do what we can in-house if we can. But currently with our staff, I, it just would have to be, I think we would have to go to bid for some of these or maybe like a, a contract where they come in and they replace valves for us.
What about an ongoing exercise program for them?
Yes, sir, so, um, we are currently, um, we have a valve truck. Um, last year we were able to purchase a brand new valve truck, which is top dollar, it's awesome, it's got a, um, a hydro vac on it also, so that it it can turn. We also have set up, um, pull behind valve, um, exercise, um, mobile vehicle, pretty much, uh, trailers that I've set at the Darrington Plant and at the water treatment where they can access that themselves or they don't have to call distribution out there. So each, um, of the divisions that need this, these valves exercised on a day-to-day basis now have their own, um, valve truck or valve apparatus, so when, with us adding more people to our department within water distribution, we will set aside a valve assessment team, once we get done with this, to where we do go in by standards and and we'd hit those large critical valves once a year, every two years or every five years. Um, I do think that where we're at now, if we can, hit as many as we can with that crew in a year. Um, just depending on the criticality of what valves are wearing and the issues that we're having, especially if we only get a certain amount of turns out of them. Not the full amount, so, yes, sir, we we will set up a crew for that, absolutely.
And my understanding before was we had this discussion back in August, I guess, whenever, that we used to have a, I guess that was back under you, Richard, right, at a valve?
Exercise program?
Yes.
Or had a, had a crew just dedicated.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we we will get back to that, yes, sir, we will get back to that, absolutely. It is a, a, if we're going to spend this amount of money on it, absolutely, we will.
That's what I remember.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Look forward to the report when it's finished, guys, appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks, Alex.
All right, let's move back to, uh, item number three, the, uh, ARPA fund update, Kayla?
Kayla, can we take it?
Okay, Kayla? Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. It has been a team effort, don't let Kayla fool you, um, wrapping our arms around this from the get-go. Remote? Okay, so the coronavirus state and local recovery funds, more commonly known as ARPA. Um, was a program that unfolded, as you know, from the COVID pandemic. Um, the federal government through, passed through, through the state, awarded us funds for various projects that they left to our choosing. Um, and that previous slide was just some of the categories that by the end of this ARPA adventure, we could use our money on. So, um, as is to be expected, when the federal government rolls something out very quickly, it stays in a pretty evolving state. And so there were very specific things that we had to use the funds for in the beginning and they were all COVID related, and then as the program evolved, um, they allowed governments the flexibility to apply these funds to projects that they deemed fit and necessary. And so this is just a timeline of our ARPA adventure here in the city of Odessa. Um, the first tranche of the ARPA funds, ten point one million dollars was received in July of twenty twenty-one. We were approved from the get-go for, um, double that, so it came in two tranches. Um, we initially awarded that first half of the tranche in September of twenty twenty-one. Um, it went to, sorry, I have my thing backwards here. Uh, medical center, R M C, um, some revenue recovery for the city and our general fund, and there was some allocated to the food bank as well. Um, the second tranche came in June of twenty twenty-two for the other half of our award. And November of twenty-three, um, the city council at the time decided that they wanted to take a look at the initial allocations that were, um, the decisions that were made. And so at that point in time, we de-allocated six point three of the initial ten that was allocated. Um, and we put it to, back into the pot, basically. So in February is when we came to city council, February of twenty-four, and our departments did kind of a show and tell, um, displayed some of their needs. Um, and let council decide what was important, the most important, everybody's important, right, but this was a limited amount of funds and so we had some decisions to make. And we just came back to you in November of last year and allocated just a small amount that was left over from some of our projects that had gotten started in early twenty twenty-four because December of twenty-four was our cutoff to have everything allocated, appropriated and tied up. So what we want to do today is just give you an update on where these funds went. Um, if there's anything still outstanding, the government did mandate that if there were any funds that were not appropriated by December, um, that we had to give them back. And so you'll see in the far right-hand column, um, anything that's under returning funds are funds that we had to give back. It's a very small amount, uh, the total out of the twenty, you know, twenty-one million that we received, we're giving back about eighteen thousand. Um, and that's just a result of some projects coming in under budget, um, which is normally a good thing, right? Um, so you'll see a couple of the projects there under O P D. Um, we had the elevator project come in significantly under budget and that project is already completed. And then there were some funds in the public restroom project that we didn't allocate, but it was only about two thousand dollars, so. Very minimal, but these were the public safety-related allocations that city council, uh, determined were the best to move forward with. So you'll see the, um, public safety, the updated CAD system, all of that's done. Anything that is under expenses has, of course, been cut a check for, anything under encumbered is tied up in a purchase order. So the funds are expected to be expensed, they just have not been yet due to the stage of the project. And I have a summary at the end that'll show which projects still have funds tied up, indicating they're still in the works. Any questions on our public safety allocations?
I think you have a question under payroll.
Yes, sir.
Premium pay for first responders of ten million, six hundred thousand. Does that mean that the next calendar year, there's not, if we paid the same amount, there'd be ten million, six hundred thousand dollars short?
No, so this was over a course of, um, three fiscal years, so of that initial ten point six million, we have approximately two point two six seven left from that pot of money. And that will take us through two more quarters of this fiscal year. So we're not paying their whole salary, we're just paying the bump that we gave them during COVID. And we didn't take the bump away, right, so it was a premium pay that we added on, that we funded with ARPA funds. So once, you know, a couple quarters pass this year, we will take on that financial liability from the general fund.
And Cal, that was, that was a bone of contention when we did this, I was very much against doing it, doing it this way. Because the question became, when they run out, then what do you do, where do you find the money to keep those pay levels where they're, where they are?
I assume it's already been budgeted in this budget period, is, in other words, we've got two more quarters, we've got at least one more quarter in this year under our current budget, correct?
Yes, so.
I mean, do we, do we budget it, is what I'm asking?
It is budgeted, yes, it is budgeted. Um, what needs to happen with this one specifically is that a reconciliation needs to be done between, you know, when we cut payroll checks, we pay them out of our payroll account, we don't pay them out of ARPA. But what needs to happen is we need to identify what costs out of our payroll account and the general fund need to be redirected towards ARPA, so we'll do that via a series of journal entries. But yes, overall, everything for those first responders is budgeted in our general fund.
But we'll have to reallocate it for next.
Well, that's my question, next budgetary period, what, I know it's through with, you just said, I think, three years, I think is what you said, how much? Uh, I want to call it, what'd you call it, a payroll bump or whatever you call it?
Yes, the premium pay.
Premium pay, how much the premium pay is going to be every calendar year moving forward if we want to maintain that same rate of pay?
So two point two is about two quarters and you can double that, so four point four per year.
That's what we're looking to make up?
Yes, currently the general fund is taking on the burden of it because we haven't moved any expenses out of the general fund. So the general fund doesn't even know that this money exists essentially.
When you say first responders, is that just fire rescue or is that fire rescue and police?
It was fire rescue and police.
Police, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so next, utilities and public works, obviously the Darrington Plant needed, um, some funds and attention, and so we did allocate three projects for the Darrington that are currently ongoing, um, and in the works. Public works, we allocated funds for the North Dixie forty-six to Walnut Avenue Street Project. Um, that project has just gone through design, I don't believe construction has started yet. Um, but it's gone through design and is in the works as well.
So just to make sure everybody's clear, as long as we've out, as long as we've identified and put the funds like on that project, even though we haven't spent it yet, it's, that's still in the guidelines, as I understand it.
Yes, yes, because it's tied up in a P O.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Making sure everybody.
And we have a.
Have to be spent by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six.
Correct, yes.
And how are we doing on that to achieve that expenditure?
Yes, we're on track.
Okay.
Yes. Um, and we are, as you all probably know, making some structural changes within the finance department, Kayla and I have been working really hard on making sure we're putting people in the right spots, having the right positions in place. Um, we will be creating a project and grant accountant who, one of their focuses will be ensuring that our ARPA funds are spent, um, in the correct timeline. But from our due diligence, so far, all of our departments have indicated that that will be the case. City council also elected to support some eligible community initiatives and projects. Um, Harmony Home came and requested some funds for their capital campaign, um, for their renovations, medical center, as I mentioned, the mental health facility, um, that's going out between Midland and Odessa, we did give a million dollars to that. Five hundred thousand went to the medical center diabetes clinic, and I believe that's already in operation. Um, and the food bank was one of the initial recipients of funds as well. Any questions on these?
One quick question.
Mm-hmm.
Previous council or certain people in the previous council pressured the hospital, medical center to give them back the three million dollars quicker than agreed to? Where was, where was that money, do you know exactly where that went or did it just put in the general?
Uh, it was just put back into the ARPA pot. Yes, so I believe when they made the initial request, the last council was under the impression that it, the, it would be reimbursable. That medical center would get reimbursed by it. So if you look at how we accounted for it in our books, it was set up as a loan, so I think that was the intention, but as to the timing of the request, that I'm not, I'm not quite sure how that unfolded.
I do, so that's okay.
Okay.
That's a story for another time.
Yes, sir.
Kayla, in, in reference to what Councilman Thompson just asked, the one million that had been approved for O R, Odessa Regional Medical Center that they didn't actually get, uh, was that also then considered back into the ARPA fund, uh, budget amount?
We did not receive that money back from O R M C.
Never gave it to them.
I'm asking if it was left alone, see, see my point, I'm, I don't know if you recall that, um, okay, medical center was offered three million. And they came through with a check quicker than what had, I think, been agreed on. The one million for, uh, O R M C was actually never issued back, I mean, to them.
You're correct, yes.
So therefore my question would be just simply, I guess, it was left in the ARPA budget.
Correct, yes.
To be a part of where we are today.
Yes, I apologize, I was confusing medical center with O R M C. Part of the initial resolution to allocate ARPA funds did include a one million dollar, um, allocation to O R M C. But that money was never expended, it was put back in the ARPA pot and reallocated in the big pot of money, the eight million dollars.
Thank you.
And just for councils, understanding is O R M C was private hospital, so there was additional paperwork that they could never get done. Is the only reason it didn't go over there, so it was, uh, very complex, they thought it would be simple, but it wasn't.
Thank you for that, that was before my time, so I appreciate the historical knowledge.
That's what old people do. As long as their memories hold out.
Well, I I like to call it learning from you, that's, that's better in my eyes. Okay, so these were some of the direct COVID-related expenditures that were made. Very small amounts for supplies, testing, vaccinations, um, vaccination clinic-related things like that. So that brings us to a summary of usage. We were awarded twenty million, three hundred thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Total expenditures to date, fourteen point four million. Um, those listed under the incumbences column there are projects still in the works. Um, in regard to the striker cots, eight striker cots were ordered. Four are being currently installed up in Lubbock right now. Um, and when we receive the other ambulances later this year, the other four will be installed. Um, the Tinder Eights are already on order, we paid half of that expense upfront so that they could start the manufacturing of those. Um, and we should get those, if not late this year, then early next. And we should get those, if not late this year, then early next year. The police restroom project just commenced this week. The police parking lot project is done, so we should see that come off of the encumbrance list here pretty soon, once we finish paying out those expenses. The Darrington, as I mentioned, is ongoing. The public works project, ongoing. And the premium pay, that last one there, represents two more quarters of the premium pay for our first responders. So as I mentioned, we have about $18,325 to send back to the treasury, which is a pretty good deal. We got $20 million worth of free money, so. We would have liked to have used it all, but just timing of some things didn't, didn't allow us to there at the end.
Make sure you make that call to Elon and let him know we'll return some of that.
Sure, well, we are doing our part, aren't we? He can have it.
All right. You want to have any questions for Kayla? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good report. We appreciate it. Good job. All right, moving down our agenda, we're on number five to be discussed and consider instruct staff, city staff, to research in adding a 311 system with an app to supplement the call center. Thank you, gentlemen. Councilman Stoker.
Well, I appreciate being able to visit about this. This was something I talked about during the campaign that, it's something that we had when I lived in Austin was 311. And any issue you had, any random dog you saw, any fire hydrant leaking, any, anything you saw, you could just dial 311. It called a switchboard somewhere and then they routed the call to the appropriate department. And being here long enough, if you see any of those things, you've got to figure out who to call and what number to dial. And if you're driving along the street, you don't want people Googling while they do that to see the non-emergency number for any of you guys. You don't want them, I don't see Michelle, but you don't want them calling 911 to, to report some of this stuff. So that was something that I've been, you know, very curious about in my research. Everybody seems to have moved into this kind of app world. 311 has gone to this open source app that's free to use and how to implement that, I'm not entirely sure. But looking at, at what our neighbors to the east use, it's called See Click Fix. And, you know, it's just a way for citizens to report things to the city and a way to, to communicate. And when I was visiting their retreat, they did an update about their See Click Fix. And, you know, to me, it, it showed a level of transparency about, you know, hey, I, I saw this going on and, and you enter your email address, you get updates along the way about, you know, it's gone to this department and, and these people are looking at it and, hey, it's finished or, you know, we need a little more time. But it just offers a way to say, you know, I, I had this problem, I, I reported it and, and now you get a little bit of an update along the way of, of what's going on. And in the, in the few months that I've been up here fielding these calls myself, it just seems that a lot of them would be very easily solved if somebody knew just the right department to call. Some of them are just very common things, but they are unsure of who to get ahold of. And so just a very common, something simple, hey, call 311. That's a, that's a simple, simple thing to do or, or report it on the app. I know there's a way to report some of this stuff on our website, but it's, you know, buried pretty deep in there. And, and if you want to report that, I've done it for potholes by my house. You know, it's, it is a struggle to get down there and, and get that done, in, in my opinion. And I almost know what I'm doing. So for, for somebody who's just trying to struggle through there to report that I had a call about a, you know, our trash can doesn't have a lid, it hadn't had a lid. So, you know, hey, you can get in there and report that. So the stuff exists. It's just the ease of access. Can we make it easier for, for people to access? And, you know, that's something that, that we've been working on with, you know, you, you mentioned the water bill. You know, if these are questions we can get answered before they call us, that, that's all the better. And, and building that relationship with the, the citizens and being open and transparent and, you know, just helping them work through their issues, I think, is a, a great, a great way to do this. So that's just kind of the, the pitch. And, and again, I don't know kind of where we go with this or what it looks like, but I'd like to kind of throw that out there.
Councilman, you mentioned Austin, that they have this system in place?
So I believe there's about 26 municipalities around the state that use some kind of 311 system that, that you can call into, and it's nationwide. I believe it started DC area or New York area as just, again, a simple way that, hey, you see this going on, you know you need to get ahold of somebody, but, you know, you don't need to call 911 and tie the emergency number up, but just as a simple way.
You've answered my question. You've answered 26 municipalities in Texas.
I think. There's some, at least.
I want to kick it to Richard. I've got nothing about it, Craig. I can't help.
No, I can't either.
I don't know what to even say. Richard, I mean, are you familiar with the systems or is it something to explore?
Yeah, I am. I think it's a, I think it's a very good idea. And Craig and I talked about it early on and we've got Monica doing some research on it already. And we'd love to research it and bring it back to you guys. Not sure what cost, if any, would be, but if there is a cost to it, obviously, we need to bring it back to you guys. But there, and Craig's right, and there may be a way that on our current website with Civic Plus, there may be an add-on module for that. So I think we need to explore and bring back to you guys.
Yeah, I know Civic Plus has a component to it. I don't know, you know, if it's the, the one we want to use. I, I don't know. Again, there's, there's a lot of, of I don't knows in this, so.
I, I appreciate Councilman Stoker bringing it up.
We're in a generation that, we all have a phone. We all have our favorite apps and I think it'd be very beneficial for the city. And this is, this is off-streaming non-emergency calls. And it'd be so easy. I can say in my own mind, hit the street, hit the water, hit the lights, whatever it is. They don't have to figure out what department, just what the problem, the message goes in. I think, yeah, I'd like to see what the, the cost of it. Edgar is good at making apps. And you had mentioned that 6, See Click Fix, that's optional software that's already developed that can, we just have to put in our information. I think it's worth pursuing.
Yeah, and, and when I, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to ask after you finish, if, if Monica could come up and, and-
Monica, if you'll come up, let Craig finish his thought.
I was just going to say, when I, when I visited with dispatch, again, that was one of my questions, is how many, how many of the calls you receive are non-emergency calls? And she said, a ton of them. So, you know, people are calling 911 when they see, you know, something that it doesn't rise to the level. And that's tying up our, our resources that, that are for emergencies and, so anyway.
Yeah, no, so it is a great idea.
Well, I wasn't sure what our capabilities are today versus what you've looked at.
Right, so currently, we do have something called Citizen Problem Reporter, and we also have a form that people can fill out. But you're right, it doesn't show real time of it being taken care of. So that's kind of the benefit to this when you talk with the other cities. I've already had meetings with the city of Beaumont, the city of Dallas. They have their own departments with us. So they put me in contact with the city of Burleson because, a little bit smaller, closer to our size, and they just implemented this. So of course, it's kind of complex. There are a lot of different layers to this and different costs as well. So we're in the exploring phase to see how much is this going to cost us? Do we want to do staffing? Do we just want to do an app? Do we just want to do a website? So, I mean, there are so many layers. Again, we have Citizen Problem Reporter that Edgar has. It's right there at the front tab of our website, but you don't see, oh, it's over at Solid Waste. Solid Waste is addressing this. They've taken care of it. And that's kind of the benefit to that app.
Well, I think it's great for that because I said all the time, Odessa is behind. We need to catch up to some other parts of the country. So I think it's a good idea because we need to move right along with what's going on.
And speaking of some of the places, there's Lubbock. We have called out to Lubbock, University Park, Laredo, San Antonio, and Austin. So it, it, there's a lot of components to this, but it can really be helpful.
But I heard Craig's, and I heard Craig say something about Midland has something.
See Click Fix.
See Click Fix. Yeah, they rolled it out about six months ago.
Is that proprietary, is it theirs or somebody else's?
It's a brand.
Yes. And, and so they have a lot of vendors, like what we're saying, Civic, there's Workforce. There's a lot of different vendors that you can reach out to, just like Civic has its own management system. And you can see, do they do it on their website? Do they do it as an app? Do they do it where they work with AT&amp;T? In Beaumont, they pay AT&amp;T a fee every month. And then each call that comes in is another five cents per call. So everything is set up differently depending on what you want.
Let's do this. Why don't you and Richard and whoever you need, come back to us with more of a, a recommendation report or whatever, give us the options, and then we can all discuss it because some of us don't know a lot about it. There's going to be a lot to learn for some of us, so.
I think the, the other thing too, the, the cost of the apps, though, but the other thing to look, just to look at would be the personnel in the various departments, who's going to take the calls and who's going to be that beautiful person that's responding right back.
Well, it, again, we're already doing it. And so this brings us an easier interface because I know when I'm trying to use that, you know, I, I get frustrated on the phone and just, oh, well, I'll just do it when I get home. And then I either do it or forget about it. And 90% of the time, it's forget about it.
And a lot of places do it very differently. So in Beaumont, they have their own 311 center. It's staffed with six people, seven days a week. So there are so many different options to how you want to do this, whether we want to start small, we want to build on it. But they've had it for a long time. But we want to look at the smaller cities because Dallas, I think their staff was about 1,000. It was, yeah, it was a lot.
Well, and the, the, the thing I love that I heard at Midland is every month, they run a contest with their city employees and they turn in tickets with their city email or whatever they use. And whoever turns in the most tickets wins a gift card.
Cool.
And so it's like now you've got an entire city staff out hunting for problems. Hey, there's trash in that lot. This, this swing at the park is broken. You know, all, all the, the issues that we see and hear about, you know, you've got a whole army of city staff competing to, to turn in tickets for. And I thought that was a, a pretty interesting way to, for engagement.
And one way to be forward-thinking, like we're talking about, in Memphis, they have virtual workers. So, you know, are we thinking outside the box? Are there moms that want to be able to work? And, you know, so there are so many different things that we can do if we think outside the box and embrace some other ways of doing things.
We look forward to more reports when you'll have a chance to dig into it, okay?
Sounds good.
Before we leave the subject, there's one more residual benefit. We're going to need to know, I was with Chief Cotton and all his staff last week, the mayor and I were, about if we can, right now, Chief, you're going to have to help me remember, we talked, covered a lot of stuff. When somebody, when 911 gets, picks up the, the call is picked up for dispatch, two minutes Three minutes. If they can cut one minute off of that because they're answering one of these calls, their program, which they use to see how efficient they are, one minute makes a huge difference on the response time to meeting their goals. So there's a real, there could be a real benefit to it, but you're going to have to figure out, which I don't know how you do it, Mr. Morton, is that if that many calls are going into 911, A, how many, B, how long do they take? And so when, when you get that number, you can throw it back into their program to see what, how it helps their response times. So there, there's a very residual, I can see a big, a big benefit here.
And when I met with the director from Dallas, she threw out some of those numbers and formulas. So there are ways to figure that out that can help us justify why we're doing it.
Thank you. Thank you, Monica. We appreciate it. And I did, just by way of, I guess FYI, if, if sometime the councilman picks on you, Chief Cotton, would you mind in the future, just stand in and come to the dice? I, I don't want you to stand for that one minute, but in the future, I want to make sure we recognize everyone properly since we're doing it online and, but we don't need to do it now. But just FYI, sometimes, sometimes the councilman pick on you and it's not on purpose, but we need you at the dice if you're going to speak. Thank you, sir.
And before we move on, I do want to say, one of my very favorite ones is, is Encore's Streetlight Reporter. And they, they have a website. So if you see the streetlights are out, you can go and pick the yellow ones you can pick. And it is just so simple. Throw in, hey, it's not on at night. Next, if you want updates on it, put your email in there. But, I mean, they have a fast response time. They get out there and it, it's kind of, kind of where we are now.
They're fast on that, but they can't move until-
I, I knew, I was waiting on that comment, but, yeah.
All right. Cal, from Stoker, thank you for bringing that to our attention. That's a great project. Let's move on to number six. We're going to discuss and consider hiring an outside employment firm, search firm to find a city manager for the city. Councilman Stoker.
Well, thank you again. Just kind of talking about how busy we are and the, the things we're doing as, as council and the things that, you know, city staff has been helping us with to, to move the ball forward. I know that it's, it's been a little overwhelming for all of us. And, you know, the one thing we are tasked with doing is hiring the city manager. And I just wanted to make sure that we were exploring all of our options. And, and Richard and I have, have since had a, a conversation about this. So we, we, you know, again, I wanted to bring this just as, as the option. I want to make sure that we're supporting Mr. Morton, just like we have offered our support to every other department, to say, look, if, if you need us, we're here to help. Again, there, there is, is probably no more important job that we're tasked with than, than finding that city manager. So I want to make sure that everybody has the, the support that they need. And that was the, the reason to bring this up and discuss and, and kind of just see where we are.
I, I personally feel that we have a person in place in the center in person to adequately, if not beyond that, help us in that process. I'm not for, I mean, just an opinion, hiring an outside firm because we've already spent $338,000 of our community taxes once before. That man right there has had years of experience as a city manager. He's got a network of people that he knows. He's a member of the organizations that are necessary for them to be a city manager's TML, and I can't remember the other two acronyms, but I appreciate that. But I think that right here, we have someone already that can help take care of that. And we still have it ongoing. Oh, where are we with, with the search?
Well, I think that's a good time now to call on, Richard Morton, I hear him's city manager, just to say, hey, what's your bandwidth? Can we help?
Sure.
Or not? I mean, you tell us what can we do to help or not help?
I want to find the best city manager for you guys, whether it's something I do or you hire an external firm. I'll give you a quick update. We have 43 total applications, okay? Of those, 22 have zero city manager experience, okay? They're just folks out there, they saw it, they applied. So you've got 21 that have some type of city manager experience. I want you guys to have a stronger, bigger field. I think that the candidates that you do have so far, there are some in there that will make a fine city manager for you. But we haven't closed the, the application process yet.
What is that? Or when is that?
I don't have the exact closing date and I don't see Charles out here to tell me. I think we've got probably another 20 days out there. But I will tell you that city managers, when they apply for a position, they take it very seriously because they're usually working for another city. And a lot of times, they'll, they'll wait till the end of the application process to, to submit for that reason. So I do think we'll be able to get you some good candidates. But I appreciate Mr. Stoker bringing this up. And if, if council wants to go outside, I've, I've already contacted a firm and they can do it for, and SGR is the firm. They're good. They do all kinds of work, executive recruitment. And they can do it for $25,000 to $30,000 is what they told me, okay? I don't think that you need it, but if you want to, that's available to you.
Yeah. Well, this is much more about checking in with you, making sure that, that, that with all the things we piled onto you, we, we weren't adding one more and, and making sure that you had the support you need.
Thank you. Right now, it doesn't take a lot of work. I mean, we advertise nationally in Texas, same locations that the, an outside search firm would advertise. So it's not taking a lot of my time right now. Towards the end of the process, it will take some of my time. That's just when it time, when, when it closes and it comes time to screen those folks. We're already doing some screening, obviously.[1785.75] and it comes time to screen those folks. We're already doing some screening, obviously. If they don't have any of the experience, they're out, okay? And you've got twenty-two of the forty-three of those. The others, I will spend some time ranking for you, but you will see them all, and you'll be able to rank them yourselves. But I'll give you some basic information about each candidate. And I continue to make calls of folks that I know in the field, and I think that is fruitful. I think an outside recruiter, to be honest, probably has a bigger band of folks that they can reach out to. That's the benefit that they have, okay? But I've done this successfully in other cities, and I know I can be successful for you guys too. But I do appreciate Mr. Stoker making this offer.
But you do have Charles for some help there too.
Oh, absolutely.
HR, so it's not like you're all alone.
Charles, the resumes are coming into HR.
Yeah.
He screens them. Do they have any experience? They go into that twenty-two pile, or they go into the pile that, hey, these guys have experience. And I've even asked him to put, okay, where are they working now? What is the population of that city? And how long is their tenure? So that when I get to them, I can quickly look through them. And then if I want a closer look, I can do that.
Well, I have my trust in you, and we said that from the beginning.
That's right.
We put our trust in you.
That's cool.
And I do like his idea that if you having a problem and we can't, then maybe we need to step forward and do something else. But my trust is in you, okay? And I believe most of us, our trust is in you.
Thank you. And I will tell you that I am using SGR's à la carte services, and they do have that. So we use their database, and we paid, I think, about five hundred dollars for the service, where they email out, they send a mass email out to every city manager, assistant city manager in the state and nationally, okay? So we paid for that. When it comes time for, once you guys select your top five, I'll probably ask them to do a social and media look as well as the financial background. And that's in their bailiwick too, and there's a price for that. So I'm using outside sources where I need it. But the basic advertisement and search and screening, that's something I think I can do for you.
Okay. Thank you, Richard.
You're welcome.
Any other further questions for Richard or?
Was there still a discussion, me and the shadows talking, do we think we need to raise our salary?
So.
Or is that something we need to talk about?
So initially, when we advertised, we just said what the previous city manager made, and that was two fifty. I looked at that again. I said, we need to show them a range, and we put a range out there of two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. And that's based on the salary survey that I shared with you guys of our pick-six cities.
Right.
I think that's a good salary range for this position. Again, I hope we attract some very good candidates for you. I think our media presence in the past is an issue. These folks look at that. They want to know that they're that they're coming into a stable situation. So I take those calls and walk them through that, hey, I think we've got a good council. I think they're forward-thinking, and I walk them through those questions before they apply.
Gentlemen, any other comments or thoughts? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move by Councilman Vasquez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my chance. Which one? Stoker, who won?
Me.
Stoker won. All right. We're adjourned.